Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 10, 2017, meeting of the Ascension Parish Planning Commission. All members are present, and I'd like everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is typified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we get an introduction of staff, please?
Stacy Webb, Secretary for Planning and Development.
Cody Morton, Attorney for the Planning Commission.
Jerome Fournier, Director of Planning and Development.
Eric Posey, Parish Planner.
Lance Brog, Zoning Official.
Sean Chereau, Engineering Reviewing Agency.
Joey Toure, Parish Engineer.
And I'd like to note, for the record, that Councilman Doc Satterly is here. Welcome, Councilman Satterly. Item number five on the agenda is the Chairman's comments, and all I would say is that we got off, the new commission, as it's so developed, got off to a little bit of a rocky start in April. Mr. Dumas was out with medical issues. Welcome back. Glad you're here. I was delayed in a trial, so I was here, but I was in another complex. And then we had two new commissioners, Mr. Shek Snyder and Mr. Furman, join us in April, so welcome, guys. Thank you for your service to the parish, and it's good to see Mr. Christie back. Thank you for filling in for me last month, and also glad you're back from your medical issues. All right, moving on to item number seven, approval or denial of the minutes in writ decisions of the April 12, 2012, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion on the minutes?
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Chasson, second by Mr. Furman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, the consent agenda. Eight A is an affidavit of mortgage declaration for David P., Singletary, Lot 3-X-A, 44159, Tom Watson Road, Santa Ma, Louisiana. Item eight B is an affidavit of mortgage declaration for Danny and Tina Claus, Lot V, 1A2, 40480, Gaydon Drive, Gonzales, Louisiana. And number eight C is affidavit of mortgage declaration for Jeff Gotrow, Lot 1B, 40355, Highway 621, Gonzales, Louisiana, 70737. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Furman, second by Mr. Dumas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to item nine on the agenda, nine A, the Nelson Ross, or, public hearing to approve or deny the following family partition. Item nine A, the Nelson Ross property, lots B1C, B1D, B1E, and B1S, and McGlynn Taylor, Inc. is here for that. Yes, ma'am?
Ellen Jackson with McGlynn Taylor Incorporated, asking for your approval.
Staff comments?
All comments have been addressed. The division meets requirements of the family petition section.
We'll go ahead and open any public hearing on this matter. Ms. Stacy, has anybody signed up to speak?
No.
All right. Nobody has signed up to speak on this matter. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments, questions, or a motion by the commission? Mr. Dumas.
Are we creating a nonconformity with that house with this further subdivision, or are we making it worse?
I'm sorry, say that again?
On Lot B1C, are we creating a nonconformity, or are we making it worse with this planned subdivision?
No, sir. The nonconformity was existing, based on existing servitude of passage. It was there. The Lot B1, original Lot B1, is being divided from the front with a simple division process, and the remainder of lots, he is subdividing two acres out for himself, and one lot each for three of his grandchildren.
So wait a minute. So let me get this straight. So B1A is being created by a simple division, and then the other ones are created by a family partition?
Lot B1B, B1A and B1B are being created by a simple division.
Okay.
And B1C, D, E, and F are being created by a family petition.
How many more lots are we going to have here?
Say that again?
B1 is going to continue to get subdivided? This is going to turn into a major subdivision?
B1B?
B1B.
No, it's that, no, it's not going to be subdivided anymore.
Okay.
Can it, after it's been, after there's been a family partition once, can there be a second one?
They're all, yeah, I mean-
If it's big enough, it can, but not by the same individual.
Right, correct.
But that property starts to get low, so they're not going to do anything else back there.
All right, well, I'll move, I'll move approval.
All right, we have a motion for approval by Mr. Dumas, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chasson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Nine B, the public hearing to approve or deny the following family partition, the Winifred Causey Estates, Lots 6B, 1A, and 6B1B, Quality Engineering and Surveying. Yes, sir.
Good evening. I'm George McCallum with Quality Engineering, asking for your approval on this family partition.
Staff?
All comments have been addressed. The property division meets requirements of the family petition.
Go ahead and open a public hearing on this matter. Ms. Stacy, has anybody signed up to close the public hearing? Any comments, questions, or a motion by the commission? I'll make a motion to approve. We got a motion to approve by Mr. Dumas, second. Second by Mr. Christie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Lot, item nine C, public hearing to approve or deny the family partition of Joella Woodford, Property Lots A, B, and C, Quality Engineering and Surveying, again.
Yes, sir. Again, George McCallum with Quality Engineering. This is an approval, or asking for approval for the family partition, and we're also, it's a simple, it's an exchange of property between Ms. Joella and her sister to remedy a shed that's encroaching over the lot lines.
Staff?
All comments have been addressed, and the property division meets requirements of the family petition section of the subdivision regulations.
Go ahead and open a public hearing. Has anyone signed up to speak? Close the public hearing. Any comments, questions, or a motion by the commission?
Move to approve.
Move, motion by Mr. Furman, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Chasson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to item 10, is a public hearing to approve or deny the following preliminary plat. So 10A is Rees Lane, that's been pulled from the agenda for tonight. So moving on to item 11, a public hearing to approve or deny the following subdivision final plats. 11A is the Sorrento Pipeline Company LLC, revision tract one and two, Morse Abear Incorporated. Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm Jerry Ritchie, representing Sorrento Pipeline, requesting approval on this.
Staff?
This division is similar to the Lanco Polymer that we had a couple of months ago. It is a property that is serviced by a 50-foot right-of-way and a 50-foot servitude of access. It's a revision to a final plat where they are carving three previously leased spaces out of a 1,920-acre tract, and they're asking for a waiver for subdividing property along a servitude of passage. And all comments have been addressed, and they're just asking for the waiver.
There are buildings on this, on this property here, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There's one building on, well, there's a building on some other property over there that we have, but we, that was already acquired previously. There's just pipelines on there.
Yeah, I didn't know if I, I went to the end, I didn't know if I was at the end. I saw buildings at the dead end.
Yes, sir. There's one building off on the right-hand side. That's our office site, which we acquired, I think, four or five years ago.
We'll go ahead and, and this is a final plat, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anyone signed up to speak? Close the public hearing on this. Any comments, questions, or a motion by the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Shek Snyder, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Furman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. All right, item 11B is Pelican Point Golf Community, 13th file lane. That's been removed from the agenda. Item 11C, public hearing to approve or deny the final plat of Ironwood Estates, Louisiana Land Engineering. Yes, sir?
Jeff Cook, Louisiana Land Engineering, asking for approval of the final plat here at Stephen.
Staff?
Comments in the process of being addressed. Obviously, the plat will not be signed until all of the items on the punch list have been checked and verified, and all the bond forms are approved.
Does Engineering, do you, y'all want to add anything to that?
No, just in agreement with Mr. Posey there, in that, yes, there are some punchless items that are noted on the final inspection, but as always, we'll wait for, we do another inspection, make sure things are verified, and provide in writing to the Chairman prior to signing.
Thank you. We'll open a public hearing on this final plat. Has anybody signed up to speak? We'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion, or questions or comments from the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to the applicant complying with all requirements from staff prior to signature on the plat, the Chairman's signature on the plat.
We have a motion by Mr. Dumas to approve, subject to punchless items being resolved, second by Mr. Furman. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, 11D is a public hearing to approve or deny the final subdivision plat of the Hollows at Dutch Town, Phase Three, MR Engineering and Surveying. Mr. Robertson?
Mickey Robertson, MR Engineering and Surveying, here tonight to ask for your approval for Hollows of Dutch Town, Phase Three. We have addressed all of staff comments and all the punchless items, so I would just ask for your approval. Thank you.
Staff?
Yes, I believe all the punchless items have been addressed. I think everything is ready. We'll, of course, verify everything contingent, you know, get the plat signed contingent on verifying that everything has been completed.
We'll go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Has anybody signed up to speak on this? We'll close the public hearing. Any questions, comments, or motion by the commission?
Same motion, to approve, subject to confirming that all punchless items have been resolved to satisfaction of staff prior to signature.
We have a motion by Mr. Dumas, the second, by Mr. Bishop. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, item number 12 is a public hearing to recommend or approval or denial to the Parish Council of Amendments to the Ascension Parish Unified Land Development Code. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fournier, if you would, sir. Please, I know you gave us a very thorough proposal here. If you could highlight that for us.
Yes, I will. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We, staff has been working with the development community and coming up with the Ascension Parish subdivision specifications. These would be specifications that have been, that will ultimately be adopted, hopefully, by the Parish Council, placed in the Unified Land Development Code. These specifications will allow the builders to understand exactly what's going to be required of them when building in the parish. It basically gives out specifications for roads, how they're to be prepared, how they're to be built, grading, there are a number of different aspects. You had a full copy of the specifications in your, in your packet. Staff has been working, as I said, with the development community, as well as many of the engineers and contractors that, that do work in the parish, and we had workshops with them, we had feedback from them. They've been very receptive in this, and I think that we, this will be certainly something useful to them and the parish, to know exactly what we're getting. I have Mr. Joey Toure here, Parish Engineer, who can speak a little bit about this. He worked very directly with them, having his experience working with DOTD for a long, long time in roads and certain engineering processes. There is one minor change that we're looking at here, and I can pass, Joey, can we pass those out? And I'll let Joey explain what this change will involve, right? And it basically applies to Section 11, Erosion Control, where we had some, some input from one of the engineering firms, and who had discussion with other engineers, and some of the difficulty in implementing that section. So right now, I'll turn it over to Joey and let him explain what's going on with that.
There's, you know, there's about, about a dozen sections that address different parts of the construction of a subdivision, and like Jerome said, this just spells out things that, that, for the most part, has been going on successfully because the contractors have worked with us very well, engineering firms worked with us very well, in putting the plans together to our, at our request. But this makes it official. You know, we can just refer to our specifications, and we don't have to be quite so laborious in our plans. It'll spell out exactly, or, you know, more precisely what we need. The, the other change that Jerome had mentioned, we had gotten feedback from a contractor in reference to erosion control items, and we made this last addition that just defines exactly what areas we want to make sure that we have grass growth for erosion control, so that we, you know, we don't get crazy and impose more than what's necessary, but we want to make it clear, because this is often a controversy. So we're making it clear, and we are in agreement, in that this is exactly the area that we have in mind to prevent erosion. So it's, in most every item, well, in every item, it's been a back-and-forth between the parish and the contractors, and we've come to, we think we've come to a good agreement on each of these items. And like I said, it's about a dozen regular construction items. It also includes parts that I don't understand very well, which is sewer, but that part has been reviewed also, and we have an agreement on that part also. So all of that makes up the specifications that, like Jerome said, will be clear for us and clear for them. It's, we actually will have specifications we can refer to if there's any confusion or any controversy on what's required.
Is this, is this amending the current code? I mean, all these issues aren't already addressed in the current land development code?
No, we actually have no ordinance right now. We just have a document that we've been following, but it was never made into an ordinance.
So this codifies it?
Yes.
Yes. And what we've been doing in the past, Mr. Chairman, is that we have been referencing other documents. As an example, for some of the street sections, that I understand, we've been referencing East Baton Rouge Parish specifications, sometimes DOTD specifications. Basically, these will codify those items and put them into the Ascension Parish specifications, so that we can refer to this one document for our specific needs in constructing subdivisions and roads of this sort.
And I know the staff has been working hard, because I went to one of the workshops, and there were a lot of developers there, but also the parish president was involved, and there was a good effort by the parish council, or the parish government to get that done. Okay. Let's go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Ms. Stacy, has anybody signed up to speak on this?
Billy Aguilar.
Mr. Aguilar, and for anybody that's speaking at a public, at our public hearings, please remember that your time limit is three minutes. We want to give everybody the opportunity to speak, but we don't want to be here all night, so please try to adhere to the three minutes and the clock's in front of you. Mr. Aguilar, yes?
Thank you, Chairman, committee members. Thank you. I just want to thank the staff for, for working with the engineers and the contractors and developers on this. This process has been going really for about five years. It was brought back originally by, by CSRS back about five years ago. It, it never got adapted, and the last couple of months, they have diligently worked on it, put it together, have listened to all our comments, have incorporated most of the things that we all agreed on into it. The, the other thing was resolved earlier today that we had a comment on, and other than that, I think it's a good ordinance, and thank the staff again for, for working on it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this and open up for discussion with the commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Shek Snyder.
Mr. Fournier, one of the questions I had is, if we move forward with the adoption of this, if we wanted to tighten guidelines further, does this, does this ordinance make it a lot easier for us to start enacting some of those tighter guidelines in the future?
It could. We, we would have to come back, both to you and the council, to get those guidelines tightened. Any modification to this, because it will be an ordinance, will require, you know, action by, by the legislative body, meaning the council. So, but yes, if we have some comments from people, and we have always looked at this as kind of a living document, so to speak, and any changes that need to occur, as specifications out in the field and best practices become more obvious to us, and we see those things happen down the line, we will come back to you for changes as needed.
If they do have a development that is wanting any type of waiver or any type of adjustment for some of these guidelines, do we have that process outlined as well?
The, the specifications are rather specific. Any waiver from that, I think, would require notification and probably an action by the commission or the council, all right? And I'll have to get with legal counsel on that as to how we might address that.
Would that go into the normal variance process?
Yeah.
Cody?
Yeah, I mean, there, there was two things. There's a normal variance process, and then it's outlined, and the code would actually has to come back to you guys for approval, depending on the significance of the change.
That's what I want to know.
That's all set forth here, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments, discussion points by the commission?
I'm just going to say, you know, I've been around for a while, and we've been lacking this, and this is a very good product. You guys have done extraordinary work, and to have the general support of the engineering community and the development community is, is in a testament to, to your hard work. So I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval to the Parish Council with the amendment that you delivered today.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Dumas to recommend approval to the council for adoption, second by Mr. Christie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes, and we make the official recommendation for approval. All right, moving on to item number 13 is old business. This is the Steve Badbin property for Danny Gietro, lots 1A, 1B, and 1C. This is a family petition. Billy Aguilar and Associates, y'all are, or BM Aguilar, excuse me.
Brian Aguilar, BM Aguilar and Associates. This is, came back as asking for a variance. What I understand, we're having problems getting the adjacent landowners that are on the same private servitude of access to sign the map, and we're asking for a variance of that signature. Mr. Danny, the owner, is here, and he's made multiple concessions to those adjacent landowners for, to try to get that signature, from when I understand, not him in particular, but the previous landowner signed their map for subdivision, family petition years ago at one time, and we're here asking for that variance of signature. I think you've got that written, statement ahead, in front of you.
Staff?
Basically, this is a property that has been subdivided previously, and a servitude of passage has been placed along the property. One of those lots, along that existing servitude of passage, is now being subdivided. The code requires any private access servitude to have a predile servitude agreement signed by all the users or owners along that servitude of access. So that's a requirement that he's asking be waived, because as he stated, he's got a couple of people that do not want to sign the predile servitude agreement. So it was approved, but it can't move forward unless he either gets the signatures or unless the commission grants a waiver.
What's the section of the land development code that requires the, all people along-
Seventeen forty twenty-six, D?
D two C.
D two C, correct.
Predile servitude agreement in situations where newly created lot of lots are accessing an existing private servitude of access, predile servitude agreement will need to be completed, signed, and by all existing lot owners of the servitude of access and notarized prior to the final plat being signed. This document will be recorded when the final plat is recorded.
I'm not seeing that in my version of the land development code. I must have a-
Seventeen four zero two six, family partitions.
Yeah.
And then go to section D two C.
Yeah, I got a D, and then a D1, but I don't have a two C on, on that. Okay.
Are you under subdivision regulations?
Yeah, seventeen forty twenty-six, family partition.
Showing, showing an amendment of 11, November 6 of 2014. What's your last amendment?
That's, that's, mine was probably. All right, well, let's, has anybody, we'll open a public hearing on this while I'm looking this up. Has anybody signed up, Ms. Stacy, to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing on this.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, 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 absolutely. I'm sorry, the commission can ask. We'll close the public hearing and move on to questions by the commission.
What's the purpose of requiring the signatures of the adjacent lot owners? What was the purpose for including that in the code?
Based on information that I got from Lance and I discussed this years ago, when we still, we were doing family petitions, and there were a lot of complaints from existing property owners along the servitudes of access when another party would, would subdivide property. And so, to appease those, an ordinance was passed requiring that everyone along the servitudes of access signed the plat if another piece was subdivided on that same access servitude.
From a legal standpoint, the servitude already exists. It's almost like you're executing a duplicate servitude. So regardless of whether the second predile servitude is signed, I mean, there's still a predile servitude of access existing across that property, to access the property being subdivided.
But it, but this is really addressing a change in, change in circumstance, you know? I live at the front end of a family partition, and the lot behind me wants to create three new lots, got three new people coming through my property over that servitude. I agree with you, the servitude's already there. I, I think the purpose of this is, I'd almost say it's like a formal notice, you know, rather than anything else.
Because you're increasing the, the use of the servitude.
You're increasing, you're changing the circumstance.
Well, I would, I would say, I mean, from a practical matter, when we have these family partitions or any subdivision of land, there's notice given up to all the, there's notice put up on the property, correct?
Correct.
So anybody who wants to stand in opposition to that has the right to come and speak at a public hearing-
Correct.
-on that and be heard, which in every other situation is, is sufficient to, to their, to their exercising their rights. So I don't see, it doesn't make sense to me because the servitude is already there. That being said, this was amended, the land development code was amended in November of 2014, so within the past three years, or two and a half years, the council saw fit to add this as a requirement, and while I sympathize greatly, I don't know, I've said it before, I don't think we have the power to override legislation, even if we think that legislation is unwise and untoward legislation. That's not our job. That goes to the elected officials to do that. So I don't know, I mean, there's variances that can be granted for hardships, obviously, but I don't know that this necessarily qualifies as a hardship in its term of it, because that's what the, the code requires. So I think we're, we have our hand side. I'd like to see, know why these people don't want to sign the servitude, but-
That's what I was wanting, you know?
Eric, you can come get your book back if you like. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I don't think they showed, I don't think they showed up in opposition to the family petition at, at the beginning.
The, the letter that he attached said that one of them doesn't want the lot, the house-
Right.
-close to the lot or something, which-
Yeah.
I mean, is this the right forum to seek that waiver, that variance from the code, or is it the Board of Adjustment, which you go?
Ah, I mean, under, under seventeen four nine, four zero nine three, this commission has the authority to grant that variance, so.
But if we, if we grant the, the variance, and I know we've looked at this before, on granting variances and things of that nature, the family partition is a variance to subdivide, the subdivision of land. So we're granting a variance on a variance, and in doing so, what I, what I'm concerned about, and, and we've talked about-
and we've talked, I acknowledge them on this commission, about the purposes of family partitions, but the legislative body of our parish made this rule for whatever reason. And the variance, we're being asked for a variance because they can't comply because one landowner or four landowners or whoever it is are holding out and exercising their right under the law, absent some incredible hardship. I don't, I agree with you. I don't think it should be the law. I really don't, because I think this is one of those unintended consequences. But I didn't get elected to this position. I mean, that's, that's so, and I've held fast on that on other issues, that we're not here to circumvent and superjudge the legislative body of this parish, absent something extraordinary that says, well, this falls outside of what was intended. But that being that said, unless there's a tie, I don't get the vote, so.
So, let me ask you a question. We deny it, he appeals it to the parish council, correct?
That would be the right.
Or is this still a variance Board of?
There is no more.
No, it's a variance. You'd be granting a waiver to the variance. I don't know that he would have any other recourse other than to have action against the property owner that won't sign.
What if we denied it? That doesn't get, that doesn't go through the appeals channel to the council?
I don't believe, huh, Cody?
I don't think so. The code doesn't really specifically talk about appeals of a variance, but I think it dies.
I think so, too.
Under request.
And if we grant it, then does he get, does the afflicted landowners get to appeal that to the council?
I'm sorry, if what now?
If we grant the variance, do the other landowners have a right to appeal to the council?
No.
I don't think so.
Not under the code. Not anywhere, doesn't say it anywhere in the code.
Well, it sounds to me like what we have here, it's a civil matter between two property owners. And.
Cody, do we know, does that ordinance, does the parish ordinance fall outside any provision of the Civil Code that I would assume would trump a parish ordinance on that?
I mean, no, other than, it's not in contradiction to anything, other than it's, there's a predial servitude already in existence, so, other than the fact that we're requiring them to have a second one, but as far as being in contrast to any ordinances, no. I did a quick search on Lexis to just see if there was any state statutes on family partitions or where this particular provision may have come from, and I didn't find anything to say that this is the basis for it, so.
And I think, I think you're right, Matt. I think, I don't necessarily agree with it, but I think the code requires you to prove a hardship, and I don't know that a neighbor's refusal to sign qualifies. I don't necessarily like the result, but.
I don't like the result at all.
I've had multiple items come up here where I didn't like the result, but I voted that way anyway. I mean, it's kind of.
I will say, I don't like the law. I think this is, I understand in part why the law exists. I don't think it's a wise law. I would encourage the council, Councilman Saraly, since you're here to revisit this issue. I would be very curious to see what one of our judges would say about this law, whether it's constitutional or not, because it infringes upon, you have a servitude, so you have a right of passage already, you have a constitutional right to use your property in accordance with the law. I don't know, this law may be ruled unconstitutional, which would circumvent anything from the parish council, but again, we're not necessarily in that position to, if we started ourselves ruling laws unconstitutional, we would be here all night, every night, be open the floodgates, so. I just, that's where, that's what I see on this, but I'll leave it up to the commission to make a motion one way or the other.
I'll make a motion to deny.
All right, we have a motion to sign by Mr. Chasson, second by Mr. Dumas. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, the family partition is denied because of the failure of the adjoining landowners to sign.
No, the waiver.
You grant the waiver. I'm sorry. The request for the variance is denied.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item number fourteen, staff report, discussion of the use of performance and surety bonds. Mr. Fournier.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the staff is asking that we be able to come back at the next meeting with a public hearing to discuss the use and possible move to change the use of performance surety bonds as outlined in the Uniform Development Code, all right? And we can discuss that at length during the public hearing process. In the meantime, I'll prepare a document and submit it to you in your package, and we would have that available for discussion at the next meeting.
And that would be discussion to eliminate the use of performance and security, surety bonds on subdivision completion?
Yes, with other modifications to the code that would allow final plats not to go before the commission for approval, but make sure that staff approves the signature of the map before it goes to you. And that would delay, eliminate some of the time delays in the signature of the final plat, right?
I would ask, and I had a conversation with someone about this today, this issue, and I would ask that you give us a proposal both with removal of presenting the final plat to the commission and without it. In other words, if you can get into the possibility of eliminating surety bonds or performance bonds, but still have this commission have, approve the final plats.
Sure.
And the reason being, and my concern about it is that, and I don't want to cast dispersions on anybody, I think this is just the nature of the beast, but if it removes it, we're kind of a stopgap of people who may be perceived or in actuality be politically connected, getting their plat pushed to the head of the line over people who are not so perceived to be politically connected.
Right, right.
And our presence, even though much of it is rubber stamping, it is a stopgap for that, to remove the level of politics from interfering with that, so. But I have thought about that surety bond issue, and I think it's the right way to go, at least my preliminary thoughts. So, I'd like to see the give and take on both with and without commission approval.
Sure. We will get that back to the commission.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fournier. All right. Engineering staff report.
We need to get a motion to set it for public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion to set that for public hearing.
I'll make a motion to set for public hearing, discussion of the use of performance surety bonds.
We have a motion by Mr. Chasson, second by Mr. Christie. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Hearing none, motion passes. Item number fifteen on the agenda, engineering staff report.
Yes, for this month's report, just give an update on projects that are in construction, where construction plans are in review. As of right now, we have approximately nine subdivision projects that are actively in construction at this time, and about four sets, four subdivisions are in construction plan review phase at this time. And that concludes the report.
All right. Before we move on to the motion to adjourn, just a housekeeping order, once we adjourn the planning commission meeting, we'll take a brief recess. We'll come back with a joint planning and zoning commission meeting, and once we're adjourned that, then we'll have a zoning commission meeting. So, the next one will be joint planning and zoning. Any motion to adjourn?
To move.
By Mr. Dumas, and we, second by Mr. Christie, we are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.